2016 County Board of Commissioners Annual Meeting to Order, please, and I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather tonight in your presence. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we deliberate issues that are important to the county. We also thank you for the protection from our firefighters, police officers, and our military, both overseas and abroad. And lastly, we ask that you keep, or we keep, former Commissioner Greg Wilson in your prayers. Thank you. Amen.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Present.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chetwell?
Here.
All present.
Entertained a motion to approve the agenda?
Aye.
May have a motion and support. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda as it's presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion is carried. We have no awards and recognition. Any communications and petitions to come before the commission, please present them to the clerk. Seeing nor hearing none, we have no special orders or public hearings. We have arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to address the board, you have five minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. The Board of Commissioners will not debate nor answer questions at this time, and you may not yield your time to anyone else. Public comment. Any public comment?
Perry Bormuth, I've had a lot of people ask me who I'm voting for in this election. I wanted to give my endorsements this evening for what it's worth, and especially for those 420 people who voted for me. For President, I'm voting for Hillary Clinton. I believe she's going to be good for our domestic economy. She's going to invest in our infrastructure. I have great concerns about her foreign policy. As you know, we've been at war for 15 years in the Middle East. This was started under President Bush, has continued under President Obama, and we now have four wars: Yemen, Syria, Iraq, and Afghanistan. And we also had a CIA-sponsored coup in Turkey. We have now taken the two secular nations in the Middle East, Iraq and Turkey, and turned them into Islamic nations. This is an error. In the 7th District Congressional Race, I'm endorsing Gretchen Driscoll. I'd like to say that Gretchen is a moderate, and I'm not, and I'd like her to have more fire, and I don't think she does. But compared to her opponent, Gretchen is the best possible choice for the voters in Michigan. I want to say that I have two principles of voting: One, you're always voting for the lesser of two evils, and two, you have to vote. In the 65th District, I endorse Bonnie Johnson. She'll be a strong voice for labor and for working people. And in the 64th District, I endorse Julie Alexander. Julie has experience in government. She's been on boards...is that my five minutes? No. She's been on boards like the Board of Public Works, the Parks Board, and most impressive of all, when I reviewed Julie's finances, the people who gave her money other than the single donation by the Farm Bureau and endorsement, I also sought, and I'm glad that she'll be there to support our farm families. All of her endorsements came from individuals, not like one of her opponents from oil and insurance money. So, her opponent has absolutely zero political experience. He has zero political knowledge. He will be a tool of whatever special interest groups give him money, endorsements, and bills to pass in the legislature. We have a lot of people like that already up there in our legislature, and we don't need anymore. So, for my personal endorsements, it's the year of the woman, and I encourage every voter to go out and vote this November, your conscience and the candidates of your choice. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have a special meeting of County Affairs and Agency chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Mr. Elwell, at this time, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll again remain in our seats as we usually do as of late. The first topic that's up are the improvements to South Brooklyn Road near the county line in Columbia Township. Chris, were you going to address that for us, sir? It's all pretty self-explanatory. Lenawee County is doing their portion down to 12 and have suggested an agreement to do the portion north to M-50 from the county line.
Yes, that's correct. Good evening, Commissioners. Couple clarifications I wanted to offer. First of all, it's nearly a mile of roadway. I think my staff report erroneously said .4 miles, so this is actually .9 miles of road. And then, secondly, I wanted to just share with the board that we do have bids for our annual asphalt, and so, you know, in compliance with our purchasing policy, the bid dollar amount to do the same project would be approximately $118,000, possibly $120,000. So, Lenawee's price was vetted by our staff, and we double-checked all the numbers because it was surprisingly low. So, we're saving on the order of $13,000 to $14,000 by partnering with our neighboring county. And that's, again, they do have an asphalt plant, and they're using their facility to do the project, and that's one of the reasons as we questioned them as to why they came in so low.
Chris, I'll comment that I did drive the route. It's very bad south of the county line and almost equally as bad north of the county line up to M-50, and I think it would look a lot better to have it all done the same time. But we'll entertain questions from the committee members first, and then if the other commissioners have questions, they can ask as well. John?
Has this been approved by Lenawee County Board already?
The Lenawee County Road Commission has approved the project. They had extra funds at the end of their year, so they were looking for high priority projects, and this was one, so this is hot off the press. We just received the information a little over a week ago, and we've edited out and recommended that we bring this forward quickly so they can do the project. So, short answer, is their Road Commission Board, yes, is approving it through their recommendation of their managing director, Scott Merrillat.
Committee members, any other questions of Chris? Or other commissioners, any questions? Phil?
Chris, do you know if there's any Michigan Speedway money involved in this? I know before, the last time this was fixed, probably eight or 10 years ago, the Lenawee County portion, I believe, was paid for by the Speedway. Are they partnering in this again?
Not to my knowledge, but I don't know, to be honest with you. I can make a quick phone call and report back if you need to know.
Curious. They've been a good corporate citizen in the area.
Sure.
If they're partnering, I'd like it known.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not to my knowledge, so...
Okay, if no other questions, we'd be looking for a motion to send this on to the full board.
Phil moved.
Motion and support? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, the same? Motion carried. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Administrator/Controller issue of the 800 megahertz radio presentation. There is a PowerPoint in the packet, and we have Rich here from Motorola, who's been working for the last three months or so on the project and has the PowerPoint with a recommendation, and I think we'll just turn it over to Rich to let him run through the PowerPoint, or PDF version of it.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rich Euslin with Motorola Solutions. So, for the past few months, we have been working directly with the public's... test. Good. I kind of like that. So, for the past couple months, we've been working very closely with the public safety agencies in Jackson County to develop a design to enhance the service capabilities of the Michigan Public Safety Communication System, or MPSCS. I'm trying to get to my slides here. So, briefly, I'll go over what some highlights are on MPSCS. We'll talk about our system design specifically for Jackson County, the infrastructure, or the backend of the equipment, the user devices that we recommend on the system, and of course, we'll open it up to questions. So, I've got a group with me, a couple engineers, and also my sales manager here to answer some questions. MPSCS is a statewide public safety communication system that is made up of over 246 sites. It started out with roughly 180 sites, and since implementation, other counties around the state have invested and built on sites to bring it up to 246. There are just over 75,000 radios on the system. All of those radios have the capabilities to interoperate with each other on specific event talk groups, meaning if there's a planned event or an unplanned event within the county, radios from inside regionally, countywide, city, or even statewide are able to switch to a talk group and have a common channel to be able to assist at any time. Another thing I wanted to bring up is deployable resources. So, I think that's important because it's another benefit that MPSCS provides. So, one, they provide a cache of radios. So, if there's a triathlon or some sort of event within your city or county, they have a cache of radios that they can deploy. And when I put on there the SOW, that's called a site on wheels, something that they've invested in for counties like Jackson or for their own use, to be able to deploy that at a given time. And it's basically a site on wheels with a tower on a trailer, and they can put that up. These are things that, through our research, we didn't find here in Jackson County. 24/7, 365-day network communication center, the NCC. I think that's very important. They do the work for the users. There's a group in Lansing that monitors the system every day and every night. Typically, they're able to find issues before the users even know that there's an issue, and they've got resources, technicians, tower climbers around the state that are able to go out and help in a time when there's a certain breakage in the system. Touch a little bit on the lifecycle project. So, back in 2002, I believe, is when the system first went full alive at those 180 sites. Since then, as I mentioned earlier, they've added more sites, as other counties have. A lot of that equipment starts to get old. The network or the backhaul starts to age and needs to be replaced, as new technology comes as well. So, the state has funded a 10-year project with $150 million to replace some of the major infrastructures, such as the repeaters, the microwave, but even dispatch consoles. And I think that's important because that includes the state for their 180 sites, but also the additional sites. I'll give you an example. Washtenaw County in 2007 deployed their system. Since 2007, they've needed new microwave as part of this project, and that $150 million is going to be used, part of that will be used, in Washtenaw County, so not another, I guess, another payment from Washtenaw County. The state would be taking care of it at that point. Give you a couple things. I mean, we've got state, federal, tribal, private first responders. Even recently, since some of the bonds have come off from payment of the system, Cherryland Electric up in Traverse City, they're starting to use this system. So, we've even got electric companies that are starting to join as well. But I think this map is important. Everything that you see here in blue resembles a majority of the local communications on MPSCS today. You see something in light blue, such as Ottawa County, Alleghen County, Cass County. Those are counties that have invested and are starting to deploy MPSCS and add additional towers for radio coverage in their county. Anything that you see in red would be the local radio system primarily for the communications. They're using similar in Jackson. You have a VHF system that you're using today. Touch on the design and some of the work that went in. We're tasked with trying to put this together, and really, I was able to get three engineers. We had a civil engineer and two radio or RF engineers working on this project. What this map resembles are all of the different locations or tower sites that are within Jackson County that we could have used to add or increase the coverage for your portable and mobile radios. You see MPSCS 1702 and MPSCS 1704. Those are current towers already on the system, so we started with that. And then, we started driving around and looking at different areas within the county to get an idea of what the terrain was, to get an idea of what those towers are that you currently have on your system today, but also if there's any other resources available. And what we found was a lot of those sites are good as far as some of the locations, but some of those tower sites, as we start to look, aren't very high, meaning we would have to add more sites to get you an increase in your coverage within the county. So, then we took a look at the county-owned property, and we thought, well, if we can add new sites on county-owned property at a height that we think is feasible, then that's where we feel that you would be able to gain the best for your dollars. So, we've added three sites. They are going to be 300-foot stainless steel sites, I'm sorry, self-supporting sites. And then, what we've done is we've taken all those sites, and we've networked them together with microwave, so it's one continuous system, or what have is simulcast. Each site looks exactly the same with the same channels, and so, when one user in the fire departments or police departments, if they're in the northwest part of your county and they talk on that radio, all of those towers light up to give you better coverage. To baseline it, we have to see where your current coverage is. So, what this map resembles is the current coverage within Jackson County, and then we outlined the city of Jackson, too. So, going back to, we use the two MPSCS sites that are in the county, and then we took a look and did a 10-mile radius around because we know that sometimes your work doesn't end at the border. And we also included MPSCS 17, I'm sorry, 5702, and we also looked at Washtenaw County. Don't feel that those sites in Washtenaw County are providing a whole lot of coverage for Jackson County right now. So, when we add the three additional sites, we're taking our coverage from what you see here to this here. Anything in blue means that it is a residential building, so we're providing coverage, if you see the blue, there's a residential building with a portable radio, so a lot of the firemen that go inside these buildings, using that portable radio in that residential building. So, I'll go back one more time to show you the difference when we add these three additional sites and then tie them together for one network. It's a drastic increase in coverage, and it's over a 20% increase in coverage than what you currently have today. High level on the infrastructure, again, we're looking at three 300-foot self-supporting towers. There'd be lighting on there, there'd be shelters, generators, all public safety-grade equipment. And it's important to know that any time that Motorola designs more infrastructure on MPSCS, we have to review this design with them. So, they're looking out for you to make sure that we're doing a correct job and adding the correct equipment. There's security, there's monitoring, so we've got the generators for backup power. We have the microwave at each of those sites, so we're going to take, we're still going to use the two existing sites there and add 10 channels to each of those sites. As far as user devices, this is our NCC 7500 console. The console is what would be used in dispatch. Couple benefits of this console is that it is approved for use for a direct link into the system. One thing that it will do is it will provide an alarm, so if there's an emergency button that's hit on a police or fire radio, they're able to monitor that alarm right there at dispatch. And also being tied into the system, there are other counties that are currently using this console today. So, in the event of a failure, a blackout, another county with this console, and I believe Washtenaw County has this console, Eaton County has this console, they're able to turn on your channels from their system and be able to run and dispatch from their county on the radio system. The Apex 6000 portable radio, that is our mission-critical portable radio. It's very robust, programmable, any type of software features that come available on the system will be able to be added to this radio. Very durable. It has a sound quality on it that is very superior to noise, or is noise suppression. So, I think that's very important because we've tested this alongside fire ambulance trucks. We know that there's a lot of noise going on, our chainsaws. And what this radio does is it cuts out that noise, that background noise, so that the voice of the operator can get through. So, it's clear communication for the user, but also for the dispatcher to be able to hear them. And then, the mobile radios, the 6500 would be the mobile radio that we would recommend to go in each of the vehicles along the same lines with the different qualities on the To summarize, we believe the five-site, 10-channel simulcast system on MPSCS is a very robust design. Again, includes the three towers, the shelters, the generators, all the microwave, portables, mobiles, engineering, installation, we do it, turnkey solution with Motorola. Have any questions? Yes, sir.
Commissioner Duckham?
The two sites on the western side of Washtenaw County, like you said, if I remember correctly, they're not very useful for Jackson County?
So, can I speak to, so, yes. To provide coverage inside of the county right now, there's not a lot of coverage that it's providing. However, as the radio gets closer to that site, the radio is always checking to see, so it will be able to be useful for roaming. So, if the radio finds that that tower is a better signal, it's going to use that tower instead. So, it is useful, but within the coverage design, as it stands today, we don't see a whole lot of coverage being pushed out into Jackson County from those two sites.
Can that coverage be directed with a, I don't know if you use a dish or whatever, to direct the signal? Could a second receiver directed at Jackson County be added, a directional receiver where it could enhance our coverage?
So, if you were, and I've got Tom Crumble here. He's our engineer. I may have him, if it's okay to just answer that.
I don't know much about this, so we'll get real specific.
Rich, can I input something as well? My recollection with the Washtenaw Towers is when they came out of the system, they passed a millage specific to this project and added a dozen towers or something of their own that they paid for. The two that we've got in the county right now are state's towers, but those are all their own for the coverage that they wanted, for what that's worth.
Yeah, and it looks like they're roughly seven or eight miles into the county, and so I'm not sure how those, but to answer your question, they could design some of that RF to be able to be more omnidirectional. However, I'm not sure if that's how they're designed today.
You can use different type of antennas to shape the pattern, but when you add gain to one direction, you lose gain in another direction. So, for those sites in Washtenaw, we're, those sites are for Washtenaw users on a day-to-day basis, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to change those patterns. But your sites, any new sites we propose, we can shape the pattern to optimize the coverage, and that's what we've done. If you'd switch to the next slide, that's what we've done on that next slide for, to optimize coverage.
Well, I represent the area, one of the areas I represent is the green area on the eastern boundary there, be Norville Township, and I know Grass Lake is, we're right in between Norville and Grass Lake Township, and that's where we have the green spot that isn't getting the signal.
And the white, if you would.
Okay. Let me go from blue to green to white. Blue represents coverage to a worst-case portable on your hip using a remote speaker mic. So, that is the worst-case configuration from a coverage point of view, and that's inside a build, a, in Jackson, we've included loss to model a medium-sized building like a plant or an office building, and then everywhere else, we've modeled it with what we call 8 dB of loss, which simulates a house or a small office building, okay? The green represents coverage on outside to a portable, again, worst-case, on the hip using a remote speaker mic. And then, the white is where we, we don't guarantee coverage to a 95% level. The perception is, though, from users, you will have coverage there, it's just not at a 95% level. After all, this is public safety, and we have to guarantee that coverage. So, that doesn't mean that you won't have coverage in those white areas.
Okay, and to a 95% level is a pretty high level.
It is.
Bill, can I interject something to, I think, to that point, because we got a lot of the jargon through all these meetings that we had from Rich, but in those white areas, he's described it well, that you're talking about the testing modules they did, is testing it with a radio on the hip using a shoulder mic, and that is not the ideal way for either this system or our current VHF system. They'll tell you that the best way is to be holding the radio upright with the antenna up, and the 95% coverage just potentially means that you may not get through the first time you key it up when it's on your hip and you're using a shoulder mic. Is that accurate, Rich? And as an example, Tim McEldowney is here, and we got some radios from MPSC, and they went out and tested using the current two towers, and they went to the area in the southwest corner of the county, and Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but areas that you see that are white there right now, they were able to talk most times on the current system, and that was before, obviously, the addition of these towers. So, the white does not mean that you're not going to have coverage there. Okay, any other questions from Commissioners, Carl?
Thank you, Commissioner Elwell. Going to the question that Commissioner Duckham stated as far as knowledge of this, the, what about scanners, like police scanners and things, that most people, thousands of people have at home that are VHF and things like that, was this going to affect that at all?
So, you have two levels of protection here. The first is because it's a digital radio system, so if you don't have a digital radio, it will sound like white noise because it's not analog. You're currently on an analog system today, so this is digital, ones and zeros, it represents your voice, and it converts it to a stream, a bitstream, of ones and zeros. So, that- So that's number one. If they did have a digital radio. The second level of protection is this system does support encryption, over-the-air encryption. All of our radios come standard with software-based encryption. So at any time, you can switch to an encrypted mode for secure, private communication.
Okay, so clarify this for me. Is this going to cost the public money? Because again, most public are going to have a VHF system. Is it going to cost them money to listen to the same thing they get to listen to now?
Yeah, they would need something, they would need the same. The other, there's a third level of protection. They would need a radio and an ID on the system. And there's a system key that is not public. It's privately held, and it's not distributed because of that, so that it can't get into the hands of somebody that's malicious. So that's another protection you have.
Carl, can I interject something? I think what you're getting at is it's going to cost the public more to be able to listen to police and fire calls? Is that essentially what you're getting at?
Well, not necessarily that. Are they going to have to go out and buy a new system, like, you know, go to wherever?
They may have to buy a new type scanner, but the reality is that that really shouldn't be a concern of ours, I don't think.
I'm not suggesting it is, but there is a lot of public out there would have to spend money, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Daniel?
A lot of places already have stopped selling the digital scanners. I know Radio Shack, because my Sprint store shares a store of Radio Shack, and they sell scanners. They no longer carry the analog scanners, all of the scanners that they carry as of right now. And in the last probably about six months or so, when they did still have the digital or the analog scanners in stock, they were actually telling customers, hey, this is going to go, this technology is going to be phased out, and you won't be able to use it any longer. So I think a lot of people who have scanners should be aware of this. This is kind of like the same switch they did when just the basic TV channels went from being analog to digital. If you didn't have a digital antenna, you had to go and purchase one, so.
Okay, any other questions from Commissioners? I got a couple of comments, if nobody does. First, I just want to thank Rich for all the hard work he did. He spent a lot of time speaking with individual police and fire people in the community and on the committee, in groups and individually, and went a long ways to make sure the system was everything both the police service and fire service wanted. Spent a lot of time with Tim as well, McElhany, who represents the fire service. The sheriff had the undersheriff representing him on the committee. Did a great job. Chris is very knowledgeable. And I know that Lieutenant Hammond also talked with Rich a lot. So a lot of work has went into it. I think you all know my background, and I just think this is an essential no-brainer step for us to make. So Rod chaired the committee. I appreciate his work and all the committee members. And are there any other questions before we entertain a motion to forward this to the full board? One of the committee members would like to make it. If not, I will.
I would make the motion to move this to the full board.
Motion and support. Questions or comments? Hearing none, committee members in favor? Aye. Committee members opposed? Motion carried. The issue is forwarded to the full board. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to report for the standing committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. This ends the special meeting of the Standing Committee of Affairs and Agencies, and we return to our regularly scheduled meeting. Entertain a motion for the minutes of the September 20th meeting, please. We have a motion and support. Any deletions or corrections? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion duly carried. We've now arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Elwell, support by Commissioner Leitner, is that correct? Or Commissioner Duckham? Any items for removal from the consent agenda? Seeing nor hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you post the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Please vote electronically. At this time, we've arrived at Standing Committee of Affairs and Agencies chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have appointments. The first group of appointments are the Farmland Preservation Committee. Kenny Price's seat is still open with no applicants. We have one public member with agricultural interest. The applicant and recommendation from committee is Andrew Alexander.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Next is one Commissioner member appointee to the same committee, and Sarah is the applicant and recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Commissioner Elwell?
Next is the Jackson Traffic Safety Commission. It's one education rep. Janelle Butler is the applicant and also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have appointments to the Department on Aging Advisory Council. We currently have three open seats. And we have one applicant for the one public member with a term expiring December of 2017. The applicant is Megan Kaiser, and she's also the recommendation from committee.
Is there any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is the Land Bank Authority. We have one Commissioner member, the current applicant is John Palacek, who's also the recommendation from committee.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
We still have one open seat at construction rep with no recommendation or applicant. And we have one city representative. Andrew Fraunfelker is the applicant and the recommendation from committee.
Entertain a motion to concur with the city's nomination of Andrew Fraunfelker for this seat? Motion in support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Lastly, the cradle to career position, current member is Julie Alexander leaving us, and Daniel Mahoney is the applicant and recommendation from committee.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is the issue of the Brooklyn Highway improvements. The recommendation from committee is for approval with this project with Longway County.
Entertain a motion? We have a motion and support. Any further questions? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lastly is the issue of the 800 MPSC megahertz radio presentation system, and the recommendation from committee is to authorize the county administrator to negotiate for the purchase and installation of a new 800 radio system with Motorola.
We have a motion from Commissioner Leitner, support from Commissioner Walz. Any further conversation from Commissioners? On a side note, I'd like to make Commissioner Rice aware that there's free applications on smartphones to listen to scanners and digital at no charge. Passed unanimously. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you on that one, Commissioners. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's all I have to report.
Thank you. Standing Committee of Human Services chaired by Commissioner Alexander. Commissioner Alexander?
Human Services Committee has no business to bring before the board.
Thank you. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
Mr. Chair, we have no business to conduct tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Any unfinished business to be brought before the board? Seeing nor hearing none, any new business? Seeing nor hearing none. We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. You have three minutes at this time. You may not yield your time to others, and board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Second round of public comment, please. Second round of public comment. Second round of public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Palacek?
Thank you for your support for the land bank, and I appreciate it.
Commissioner Duckham?
I'd like to thank the radio committee and everybody that helped them out. This is a, it was a big concern out in the southeast corner of the county, and it's been a concern for a while. So I'd like to thank everybody for their work, and if we get our radios, I'm sure that it'll work well out there. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Leitner?
Just a couple of things that we have coming up on the fairgrounds. One is this weekend, we have the By Michigan Now Festival. It's a sponsored event by American One. On the grounds is everything Michigan-made, Michigan products. Should be a good time. And then November 5th, we have the Jackson Toy Show coming up. It starts at 9:00 a.m. And then the Night Lights starts up on January 20, not January, November 24th, we're going to have the Night Lights run. And then the 25th, the Night Lights will start up. So those are a couple of events coming up at the fairgrounds.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing nor hearing none, we have no closed session. Entertain a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. We are adjourned. Hammond?
419, that's how many votes you got. You got 419. You like that, old man? Yeah, but that's what they're totally here for.